Yeah.
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 What?
When I, when I saw them, I sent them an email saying, did you send me?
Yeah.
It's like, no.
Yeah, I sent, I forwarded, the one that I got, I forwarded to his office. It's like, oh my words.
Yeah.
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 You're like the 150th person.
Yeah.
Them only got one too, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Alison.
Was it you who replied or was it Alison?
Oh, she was replying too. I had to get in time on them, you know, phone calls and everything. The two of us were trying to field it all day.
Yeah.
We good to go?
We're all set.
I'm checking out.
All the meetings.
Okay.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, et cetera?
Nope.
No?
Second.
All in favor? Public forum, anyone to comment? Yes, Andrew, please. Either way, here or there, up to you.
Is that mic on?
Oh, green light.
Should, should the lights be on here?
There it is, right there.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to read a letter from the Conservation Trust for the board and for Keith. Easter Fethon Town Manager Tom Danilak, Select Board Chair Dan Dubois, Select Board Vice Chair Jason Neto, Select Board Secretary Velma Jones, Select Board Member Phil Labby, Select Board Member and for the town of Arundel. Dear Keith, Tom, Dan, Jason, Velma, and Phil, On behalf of the Arundel Conservation Trust, I'd like to express our sincere gratitude for your allowing act to use the Arundel Town Hall as the base for our first annual Fall Trail Fest on September 21st, 25th. The use of the community room, the restrooms, and the outside grounds worked out perfectly for us. The EMT and the truck from the Arundel Fire and Rescue was very helpful as well, so thank you all very much. Our first Trail Fest was a smashing success. Almost 100 runners competed in either the 5, 10K, or half marathon, which exceeded our expectations for this first race of ours. In addition, the Kids Flow Trail Fun Ride and Race was an exciting and festive time for the younger members of this great community. All in all, the turnout was much larger than expected. Runners and families from all over Maine got to experience what a beautiful new facility we have, as well as the welcoming town that we live in. As the Arundel Conservation Trust moves forward from our humble beginnings in 2017 towards our fifth year, I want to let you all know that your support and partnership is so very much appreciated. Regards, Henry, President, Arundel Conservation Trust, on behalf of Arundel Conservation. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Henry. Great. Stay here.
Thank you.
Non-agenda items? They will move on then. Approval of minutes, September 27th. Only thing I note, Keith, is on the public forum, you have, it was referred to the most recently approved statute. I think you meant statute, but it's our policy, I think, right?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
Can I make a motion? We approve the minutes with that one correction.
Second. All in favor? Approved or not? Committee and Board reports? Managers report? Issues with EMS?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you recall at your last meeting, the, the Fire Chief was present to, to discuss some challenges relative to EMS staffing and made a proposal to adjust wages to sort of enhance folks to, to participate in order to fill in for some of the shifts that we had open. As a result of that, part of the discussion was to look at other, the two other per diem activities that we have, which would have been advanced EMTs and basic EMTs, and make some adjustments accordingly. So, within your packet, I provided to you some adjustments and what those adjustments would do relative to the budget. In addition to that, I had to also make some modifications to the call budget as well as a result of past decisions made by the board during the budget process where if we had per diems that were returning for on-call duty that they would get paid their EMS or per diem wages as a result of that. So, what I did is I adjusted based on the remaining weeks that, that we have for the, this fiscal year, and at the end of the day, we would be making total adjustments of $25,412 in total cost, which would be payroll and FICA adjustments as a result of the changes. So, I guess if there are any discussions, I, I did move from, as you can tell, from $21.57 to $24 for paramedics. Advance went from $17.98 to $20 an hour, as I proposed, and the basics went from $16.48 to $18 an hour.
My first question would just be the funds, you know, fearful of the funds.
Um, well, Jason, I think we have to be cautious in how we're expending money within the budget this past, this past fiscal year, even not, even though we just had the audit financials, we had over 20, 22 to 23,000 that was remaining in that, in all three of those budgets. So, I think with some belt tightening for the chief to understand that he may have some adjustments here, that he's going to have to take that in consideration as we move forward through this process.
You're saying that this amount is basically fully funded? We don't have to go and get some more money? It's going to come out of the current budget?
We're not anticipating coming after any more money. I, I think that was one of the goals that, that you had indicated to us at the last meeting, that the discussions of both the Fire Chief and I, based on, you know, this proposal and what it, what it means for him to be very cognizant of his budget and the expenses that are within it.
Okay, the last meeting, the increase for the paramedic, right?
That is, that is correct, Chairman.
So, we need to approve the, the two additional increases for the EMTs?
If you so desire, yes, sir.
Further questions and discussions, folks? Go ahead then.
Yeah, I just kind of follow up a little bit with Jason's point and, and what you said. Is there, if the money's coming out of the, the current budget, what's the short, is there any shortfall? What's he cutting back? Or is he just going to, you know, make sure that he doesn't $24,000 extra like he did last year? I mean, what?
Well, you know, there may be some expenditures within the budget that he was anticipating purchasing. I'm just using this as an example. I don't know if it's, it's clear, but maybe he had a bunch of fire hose that he wanted to replace. As a result of maybe this adjustment, he won't be replacing it as frequently as he anticipated. In our discussions, he indicated that a lot of, some of the personal safety equipment that he already had purchased, so even though he may have anticipated some additional purchasing, he doesn't believe he's going to need to. So, he's already thinking about changes within the budget in order to take care of the staffing issue.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want to not buy needed equipment, you know?
Well, it-
And then come back to us next year with a, with a huge-
Well, I, I think it's a double-edged sword that we have, Dan, because we could buy the needed equipment, but if we don't have staff to use it, then what's the sense of having it? So, I guess the prevailing issue that we have here is staffing, and we're trying to make the, we're going to try to make this work within the confines of the budget that was approved.
There are no other comments? We'll entertain a motion to approve the increases to the advance of basic EMTs as suggested by the Town Manager.
I'll make that a motion, providing this all can be fit within the current budget.
One second.
Further discussion? All in favor then?
All in.
Your statement?
Yeah, this one affects me, so.
Sure.
The next thing is, if you recall, for the last couple meetings, we've been talking about trying to look at the vacation maximums for some of our long-term staffing employees. As you all know, we've had some that haven't been able to take vacation. As a result, they're accumulating more hours that, that they've periodically tried to take a day here, a day there. So, I thought my initial remedy would be to, to add 100 additional hours of accumulated time that they could, they could put on the books, but in terms of separation, they could not exceed the required 200 hours of maximum leave that they would get paid for. So, in other words, they could carry 300, but if they separated and had 300 there, they'd only get paid for 200. So, I tried to lay that out in the, in the page 13 of our policy, showing you the maximum accumulated vacation leave, and I provided the notes in red. Hopefully, it came through in red on your, on your, on your sheet. I copied it in red. So, it would be under, if you look at page 13, under 20 years, it would say note, "Employees who have been in service for 20-plus years can accumulate up to 100 additional hours with no payment upon separation and good standing." And then this next paragraph down, it talks about whose employees, whose employment with the town has been terminated either through resignation, retirement, or layoff in leaving the municipal service in good standing, so entitled to a cash payment for maximum allowed accumulation not to exceed 200 hours as of the date of said termination. So, that would cover all the other employees too, because the 200 cap, if you have an employee up to 10 years, they've got only 120 hours that they accumulate, and from 11 to 20 hours, they can only accumulate 160 hours. So, certainly within the confines of the cap.
Yeah, you had brought up something about funding into the 401K, right?
Correct. He had, Tom had suggested some discussion on, on taking the retirement funding or taking funds that were in accumulation of over $200 in trying to move those into retirement plan, our Voya replant. I have not received any information back from Voya as a result of that. They've indicated to me that I need to talk to our contract rep and try to work out some sort of arrangements there. So, that's still ongoing, and it may occur, and if it, and if, if we're successful, I would come back to the board and discuss those options if, in fact, they're, they're still there. But there, I don't have any answer to them right now.
Anything further on that? Need a motion then to approve the policy change, I think?
Both made. Yeah. Second.
Would you be made in second? Any further discussion? All in favor then? Policy's changed.
The, the next thing is that I'm hoping with my little notice to you all prior to this business meeting, I, when I sent out the packets, I said, "If you get a chance, drive Log Cabin Road and take a look at the, the changes that Pan Am Railways have made to the approaches on either side of the railroad, rail bed." And for, for me personally, several weeks ago, I got my first phone call. I drove down there and rode it at the posted speed limit, and I thought I was coming out of my, if I didn't have my seatbelt on, I think I would have hit my head on top of my, the roof of my truck. So, I immediately went to see Roger, and he had the same expression on his face as I did when we drove down it. It was pretty, pretty severe as far as we were concerned. So, I, I asked Roger to put up some bump signs to try to at least have the traveling public understand that we've got some issues there. In, in addition to that, I've reached out to, Roger has as well. He's reached out to MDOT. I've reached out to Representative Wayne Perry, and I've reached out to Pan Am Railways and have had zero responses from anybody at this juncture. Now, Roger got a little further. He, he had somebody who said they were going to call me today and talk about this from MDOT, but I never received the phone call. So, we now have this issue. Yeah. And I'm not quite sure how, how far we want to go or how long we want to go before some sort of corrective action takes place. I, I think it's dangerous. Now, you all may have a different opinion, I'm not sure. Roger's here, he can lay his opinion to you as well, but I think something needs to be done. Whether, whether the DOT or the railway does it, I think we have a responsibility to at least try to address the issue somehow. And if we, you know, my, my thought is if they're not, if they're not going to be players in the repair, I think that we go ahead and be that person to repair it, and then we go after them to say, "Look, you left this up standard. We're trying to fix something." But, you know, that's, that's up, that's entirely up to you folks. I'd love to hear what you guys think about the, the, the road bed.
It's going to be a lot worse in the winter. Definitely, we certainly want to get that fixed before the tar, I mean, the asphalt plants close, right?
That's a difficult one, that's all right, Roger.
The problem we have is the window of opportunity to fix this is closing because of what you said with paving plants. Our own ordinance calls for 50 degrees and rising days. Well, how many more of those are we going to have? What's going on right now is exceptional, but something needs to be done. We have to have the railroad involved because we'll be in there crossing. We need to add some shim to 50 feet on the Route 1 side, approximately four inches thick, the same thickness on the opposite side, a little further, 60 feet. It's going to come in at just about, just under 100 tons of fix. If Dayton will hold their price, what we're contracted with, which was $72 a ton, that would be great. I'm not sure they would, because this is over and above. This is grinding joints up against the existing pavement that they put in, plus going back 50 feet on one side, 60 feet on the other, grinding other joints to blend it back in. It's the only way that's going to fix this, right? But, there's a lot of bad things that can happen there between now and then, and if we don't do something pretty soon, it's an issue. I was informed that somebody saw or knew of a little bit, bottoming out on that a little bit. That could be very bad if he gets hung up there. Somebody driving over that at night at the posted speed unfamiliar with that, especially when it gets a little black ice on it, or just plain wet and leaves coming down, this happens this time of year. So, the window's narrow. I talked to Dayton today. They can possibly do something for us. We've got to act on this, and if we don't get any response pretty soon, this would make a hell of a good News Channel 6 story. Hate to ambush anybody like that, but what are we going to do?
So, the railroad did the work?
Yes.
And is this the railroad's right-of-way that we're in?
Yes.
And this is the state road that we're working on?
Exactly. Yes. All those things.
Those are problems, folks.
Yeah. Yeah, real, real problems, and, and I was hoping that we'd have some better answers for you tonight if somebody would at least communicate with us. I don't know. Jack?
It, it certainly would be, I would expect that if we're going to do any work, we want to take some before pictures, because, you know, we just, you know, go ahead and do the work, and then the state or somebody says, "Oh, no, it was fine."
Well, I think that's the issue that Tom's bringing up. What legal authority do we have to correct it?
Yeah.
If we're going to get involved in a litigation, we're going to need an expert witness to say-
This is unsafe.
Who qualifies for that?
You could traffic engineers or folks like that.
If you can get a response from him. He works out of Scarborough, 885-7000. Try YOLO. Maybe we need to fish a little higher and get ahold of somebody in the Commissioner's office or something if we can't get any response at this level, but something needs to be done.
Haven't gone chopping that high yet.
No. We haven't gone that high yet.
Guess it's time.
And you've got nothing back from Wayne at all? Nope.
Let me contact Susan as well, right? She's our senator.
Yep.
She was a shambles.
Yep. I'll reach out to Susan tomorrow.
Yep, see what kind of response we get there.
Okay.
But, I'm not opposed to some publicity about this. Sam Bag or not, I mean, doing everything but getting to contact people, they don't return phone calls, that's, that's outrageous to me.
Yeah, it's a problem. It certainly is.
Especially with the window closing.
Susan would like to bring the TV station up there and do a little story.
Reality of it is, is you get less than a month to deal with this.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and the weather could all of a sudden just turn, and then-
It's going to change Saturday. It's going to be a whole lot different next week, probably, if you believe it.
All right, we'll keep, we'll keep plugging, you know, we'll, we'll go a little higher up onto the food chain, see what we can get.
So, Roger, but if we do the work, what's it going to cost us? No. I understand.
Ten grand.
Ten grand?
Ten grand.
Well, I didn't know that without Pan Am being-
Oh, I, I hear you, Phil. I understand.
Right, Roger? You can't work in there without Pan Am present.
The railroad has to be on site. They don't go within, and that's ten grand. You can't just show up and fix it. You can't get them to call you. How are you going to get them to be present?
I can't even get them to return my phone calls or answer my emails right now, and today I gave him even a more of a, a threatening call, you know, response to try to get some sort of response coming my way, you know, gave him a little more harsher tone than I normally do, but I still haven't received a response.
Channel 6 and Channel 13 on your side. I mean, you're results.
We got, we got to do what we can, because we know about it. If something happens this summer and has an accident, I mean, this summer, this winter, and has a bad accident, you know, there's going to be a lot of questions about, well, what'd you guys do with the town of Arundel? You know?
What's the consequence if we just go in there and do it? If, if we've recorded all these times that we tried to contact people, they're not coming back? If we get that all recorded, then we get something to stand on, don't we?
Be interesting.
Well, I mean, we could find ourselves in litigation.
Sure. Absolutely. Trust us.
Absolutely. I, you know, I never thought of the avenue of at least getting an independent traffic engineer to review that. We'll get on that tomorrow and see if we can get somebody down there to take a look at it.
Later, what's wrong here?
And maybe they have a, that way we can use-
That they didn't meet, and that's what we want to show. That's a serious speed bump.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great, thank you, Ken.
Okay, in the business here, liquor license for Noel Bandaloo.
Yes, Bandaloo has submitted a renewal license for their business on Route 1. They've provided all the necessary paperwork, and the code enforcement officer has reviewed and signed off. We just need some action by you folks to renew this application.
I make a motion, we renew the application for Bandaloo.
Second.
All in favor? Moving on then to Charter Review of Reposed Amendments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I provided a, a working copy on your desk this evening to take a look, look at and identified in red areas that we had discussed previously relative to some changes or amendments that we'd like to see occur within the Charter. Primarily the ones that I addressed or do recall us discussing were some changes in the purchasing size, which, which appears on page 13 of the document. Right now, we're, we're limited to anything $5,000 or more has to go out to a competitive bid process. And then the other areas that I identified were the composition of certain boards. You know, we've had, we've had a, a range in there for some boards from, you know, five to seven or seven to nine, and if you recall, I think it was last year, we, we were in a, in a situation- Um, and if you recall, I think it was last year, we, we were in a, in a situation where, based on the size or the, the height, the, the total number that could be on the board affects our quorum in order to do business. So our attorney had advised us that once we do amendments, that we come up with a fixed number, and that way we know what our quorum will be for decision making, uh, moving forward. Uh, and then finally for me, I, I saw some, uh, I had some thoughts on, the, uh, the identification within the document of the, uh, Fire Rescue Incorporated. I didn't know if we should have some discussion on whether that should stay within the document because we actually, though the incorporation may still exist, they're not functioning as the, um, as the fire department, the fire rescue department any longer. So I don't know if we want to identify that within the document or have some discussion on that. That was another place that I saw that we may have some further discussion. Those were the areas that I, that I picked out. Obviously, there, there's probably some in there that I've missed, and obvi- that's probably why we'd like to have a review committee to take a look at this. But those are the ones I saw, and I'd be more than happy to put any areas in red that you think need to be, uh, discussed as amendment opportunities within the document. Once we, once we do that, I think that we need to, um, begin a process of contacting, um, all our folks and, and perhaps giving a definitive date that we'd like to get together and start and discussing this, and then I, you know, I really wanna have the board weigh in and what kind of parameters that we need to have within this committee as we look at these, uh, proposed amendments.
Well, it probably makes some sense, uh, once we establish a time for this committee to meet, get copies of the charter to everybody who's participating, and at the first meeting, we can start isolating or identifying those areas that people think we need to discuss things. And obviously, we can, we'll do that as well.
When you, when do you think we should get started? I mean, we had some discussion on that at our last one, whether it should be early or later. Um, I think that the cons- the, the consensus on the board was to start earlier than later.
Yeah, but I just didn't want to run against the budget board meetings, so if we got time now, I mean, there's not a whole lot of amendments that I don't think that we're gonna be discussing.
Okay.
I agree. I do have a question.
Yep.
Uh, I mean, I'm sure we can discuss this as a group, but the issue with the composition, if, if we were to say, if you have six members, this is your quorum, if you have seven members, this is your quorum, if that was all identified, I'm, I'm not saying that's the code, but if that was all identified in the charter, that would pretty much allow us to still have, if we wanted to have, a range instead of a set number, right?
I, I'm not sh- I'm not sure I follow the question, so.
The issue was because of the range of members.
Right.
There was a discrepancy on what created a quorum.
Correct.
There was confusion.
Correct.
If we spelled out the quorum for that range, then there's no more confusion.
Well, I think the quorum has to be wrapped around the, the total amount of members of the committee or board that you're, that you're talking about. So if you have seven, then the quorum would be four.
Right.
If you have nine, it would be five.
Right, so if we spell that out in here,
Correct.
then we could still keep the ranges.
Well, I don't know if you'd wanna keep the ranges.
I'm just, I don't know, but I'm just saying that, that we could still keep the ranges if we wanted, if we decided to keep the ranges, as long as we spelled out the quorum.
So what you're saying is that if we have a, a board of seven, the quorum is four, if we have a board of nine, the quorum is five?
Right.
I see what you're saying.
Well, that, that still gives us some flexibility to have a range. You know, we may wanna say we want nine numbers, but we can't find anybody. Because if we say nine and we only have seven, then there's still a question of what's a quorum.
Right.
Right? Nobody wants to volunteer, or nobody wants to come in, then we still run into that issue.
Well, if you have a, if you, if you identify it as a, as a group of nine, then the quorum would be five.
Right.
And if, and if you only had six members and you only had three show up,
Right.
you can't do any business.
Right.
Or you can do business, but you can't take any form of votes.
Yeah. I mean, that's something we can have with discussion.
So are we looking to the end of October or, or to get to kick off the first meeting?
Seems reasonable to me.
Okay.
I'm in.
Maybe circulate and find out what's the most convenient day for folks.
I will.
No.
We'll try to keep it.
We had, what, twelve or, how many people?
What's that?
How many people did ask to serve? Um, we've got a few.
We have nine on the list.
Okay.
All right, so I'll, I'll circulate that and, uh, let you folks know what we come up with in terms of, I'll try to keep it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, somewhere within those three-day parameters.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Discussion on the Kennybunk River Mint.
Yes, I, uh, Sam and I spoke, uh, spoke today, um, and within your pack, and I've provided the management plan for you, but also a, a bullet point of, of things that Sam had thought would be a good way to start and kickoff, and he's here to, to talk a little bit about that and see how it resonates with the board. Great.
Can you get to the mic?
Yeah.
You remember the last August, I believe it was, that presentation by, uh, Minji uh, from New York County Soil and Water Conservation, who would put this report together on the Kennybunk River. Basically, as you remember, the Kennybunk River itself and the two, the two tributaries that are in our town, Duck Brook and Gosnell, are, are polluted. Back terrier from runoff, from, from failed septic tanks, I mean, you name it. They're not acceptable standards to be classified as rivers that really would be safe for recreation and use by the public. And of course, uh, our feeling on the Conservation Trust, and this is not a Conservation Trust thing, but our feeling on the Conservation Trust is that that river is an essential part of the future of our town. It borders us all the way. It gives recreational opportunities and wildlife, uh, learning opportunities, and it's something we should try to keep. It's pure and useful and it's, is, uh, available to our citizens as we can. I won't bore you by going through this report, but you remember that, uh, at, from this point forward, uh, there may be additional study work done, but the remediation is up to each town to find out ways to solve their own problems as identified here. And funding is available in many cases from federal and state agencies. But we don't know that yet. We don't, but it's up to us to find out and to come up with some plans, come up with some timelines, come up with some financing alternatives, obviously to present to, uh, to, to you all for any action. The purpose of this committee we're talking about here is really to provide advisory services for Keith primarily, and for you. Not to, not to do things independently. So I don't see it as a formal committee, if you will, in the town structure. It's really to do some investigation work and to find out what the, what the, uh, problems are, what the possible solutions are, to do some public education. Without public education, uh, according to the report, and I agree with it, if we can get the public on our side to, to try to fix their river, it's what's needed to start, to get some energy to it, rather than just having to come down and eat it to fix things. And I think we can do that. I mean, I'm gonna throw it to you now. I mean, you think, 'cause you talk about education.
I said, Sam and I have been talking about this for a while, it just, um, again, it's a, it's a, it's a good management plan, but they kind of turning it over from the, you know, from the grassroots, from the bottom up, for us to figure out how are the towns gonna solve it, you know, what, what kind of work, what would we recommend, what kind of work needs to be done, so. Yeah, it's just, Sam's come up with a few points about what we would do if, uh, if there was such a group.
The other thing that's interesting here is, you know, this is sort of, we, we we either hang together here, or we only separately. This is a river, and the problems that we get from Lyman, uh, or the problems that come into the river from Kennybunk, uh, are landing on our shores, so if one of us fixes it and nobody else does, then we haven't gained the heck of a lot. So it, it, to, to me, this is a great opportunity to have a, a mechanism to share information amongst the other towns with similar committees or activities in other towns about what solutions they see for funding possibilities. Maybe it's the case where we join with, and I'm making this up, join with Kennybunk to fix an issue that, that we both have, to, to, to approach the federal DEP or federal agency or state agency for funding, or rather than just ourselves, or the issue exists in, in one or more other towns, too. I'm just suggesting that cooperation here, rather than each of us trying to reinvent the wheel. Let's learn from each other.
And I, I think, Sam, just to add what Sam was saying on education, I know that it was really interesting, we talked about this at the ACT board meeting the other night, one of the members said, you know, I love this town. Uh, I live on, I live near the river, we use the river. I don't even know what the problem is, or that there is a problem, so. How do you take a report like this and make it understandable? The folks just want to nutshell what's going on, what's the problem? What, what can we identify in this town that we could, they, how will we help solve? So I think that's, when I think about it, working on it, I think about that. Well, without reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, we've already, I've already had some conversations with representatives from, uh, from, uh, the Kennybunk Conservation Commission. Another woman from Kennybunk who served on the steering committee of this report, as did I. And I, there's, there seems to be considerable enthusiasm for sharing rather than each doing their own independent exercises. So I guess what I'm asking, we're asking for your blessing to go ahead with this and find some more members, find some folks, maybe advertising in, uh, the websites and in the arrow through ACT means, uh, whatever.
Yeah, Sam, that, that was what we were, Sam and I talked a little bit about today, was if, if you, you folks feel that it's advantageous for us to establish an advisory committee to assist you in some decision-making here, that we go ahead and advertise that on the website, see how many folks we get that are interested in serving, put a list together, um, then perhaps, uh, you know, based on your, your past behavior, uh, has been, if we have people that are willing to serve, we're gonna let them serve. So if we get a list together, then we can have, uh, uh, have a, a, at least an initial joint meeting to discuss where we're gonna go with this, and then, um, allow the advisory committee to do some work on our behalf to, to, uh, talk to other communities, to see what they're doing, to delve into the uh, management plan, to see what may be, uh, the easiest thing, uh, the easiest fruit on that tree to sort of pick and take care of initially, before we get into, um, maybe some larger, uh, cost, uh, things that we'd have to do. But, um, to take our, take some advice from an advisory committee to assist us in moving forward with this plan.
Yeah, um, I'm certainly a hundred percent on board with, you know, like a committee to get together and, and to, you know, to get the communications out and, you know, start informing people of this, but when I look at this, it said, uh, the K, KRR Advisory Committee would advise and periodically inform the town manager of activities, progress, and suggested rem- remediation plans. Are they going on people's properties, trying to find out, I mean, what's, what is that meaning there, you know, 'cause you're gonna get people that are gonna be a little worried about that, somebody sneaking around on their property?
Great question. There's been a lot of work that's been done here, uh, right, survey work, the survey work has been done. I believe they've already got funding, uh, for another phase of the survey work. Now, does that mean they have to go up to Duck Brook and do more surveys? I can't answer that, Dan. I do not know. But, you know, Duck Brook and Gosnell Brook are both, Duck, no, Duck, Duck Brook, I take the words. And, uh, and that's something that's, that's totally within our town. I, I guess what we're really saying is, uh, we wanna take the work that's been done here and then sit amongst a, a group of people and come up with some answers, some plans, some ideas, and some suggestions.
Yeah, and I, I guess me, you can't force anybody to do that. You can't force me to do what they're wanting to do. I don't see our job.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, curious, you know, septic runoff, I mean, how, you know, in order, in order to find that, you're gonna have to test, you know, from Alfred Road or, you know, all the way, and just somebody's gonna have to go out and do that and figure out where it's coming from, right?
A lot of that's been done, see, and they're, and they're doing it even now. Um, I can't say about Alfred Road North, but, uh, I know on the Kennybunk River, they're sampling now, uh, they're sampling at public points where they can.
Yeah, I mean, Duck Brook though comes in through, you know, I mean, there's, it basically, I think that kind of, kind of like starts in Hissong's Field, doesn't it? By, by, by Sean Dooson. I think that's kind of where it starts. I mean, I know that it crosses underneath, uh, Limerick Road. Some of it starts there.
Yep. It's all, and there's various, you know, problems they've identified as, that's helping cause problems. But a lot of the data is already being gathered and picked out and reviewed.
But, but there are some things that, you know, will require, uh, additional, a lot of additional discussion before anything is done. That's some of the suggested management tools to be used. Things like antiterritorial pumpout or septic tanks, for instance, which some towns have in their code, I believe Kennybunk port, but don't take me on that. What's the moment of this, as that, that's an example of something that if we wanted to consider that, that would require a lot of conversation.
That's a lot, yeah.
A lot of conversation. So, uh, part of the, uh, of the duties of this advisory committee would be to highlight those issues and to bring them to you, obviously, and then you decide what you should do. Fair enough, please?
Uh, I think that's, I think that's spot on. I think some of the things have been identified within the, within the, the plan. Um, I think, uh, we would, we would look at the advisory committee to sort of probably prior, prioritize where we should be moving with some of these things. Um, I think there are, there are, uh, planning issues that perhaps need to be discussed with the planning board in parts of this plan. So there's a, there's a plethora of things that we can do, but I think, uh, I think that's a lot of work. And I think if we have a committee who really wants to delve into it to try to give you suggestions and recommendations, then you can have that discussion with those groups and then maybe move this forward.
By the way, this is probably a ten-year effort.
For sure. Yeah, for sure. I mean, I, I think it's, it's a good idea to, I mean, we need to start educating the public on this stuff, you know, I think it's discussion about the, the arrow and, and the website, I think that's, we need to get that stuff out there because, I mean, a lot of people just don't, right, you know, the book comes through their backyard or through their front yard and whatever, they just don't realize what the impacts are, so. You know, I think education is certainly key to this, and that, that would be my suggestion as your number one start, but.
That's exactly where we hopefully would start, public education, reaching out to, to the, to the schools, for instance. The younger, younger kids love this, this stuff. As well as parents. The younger kids love this stuff, as well as parents and others, just tell them what's going on. There was a survey that was done, available online, I believe, and what are they, 20,000 people in the three towns, four towns, something like that? They get something like 160 responses on the line. So, there's a lot of work to be done in terms of education.
Yeah, we just have to be careful with, you know, the inform, you know, of activities and, you know, because you're going to get, I think you're going to get a lot of throwback on that, because there's plenty of people that are going to say, you know, you're not coming on my, you're not going to check my septic system, you're not, you know.
Well, I think we can, I think we can curb some of that anxiety by, if we do establish an advisory committee, those advisory committee meetings would be open to the public. Folks could come in, be involved in that. If we're going to move any suggestions forward prior to that, obviously, the public hearing tool that is available to the board of selectmen can be used very effectively to try to get the word out and get more response from the public prior to any action. So, I think there's a lot of ways that we can hopefully engage the public into the discussion and see if we can move it on down the road.
I know. I know, but, yeah, but some people just don't, you know, they don't care what happens downstream, you know?
I know, I know, yeah. It's an all-consuming climate, anyway, I heard that.
We ran into that issue before here, so.
Educating people.
Yep, yep.
We all think together, we think separately. So, do we need a formal vote or is it start?
I don't think we need a formal vote at this point. You know, I'll go ahead unless I hear strong objections. We'll put some advertisement out to try to get an advisory committee started. I'm sure that these two gentlemen may be beating the bushes for some other folks to participate in the process. And we'll see what shakes out, how many people we get that are enthusiastic about it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, second. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Yep. But we all got that email about the beach parking thing. Did you, beach parking? Yeah, did you get that email?
I don't think so. We don't have a beach in Arundel, so I just, I didn't get it.
Right, so there was, I thought you were on that email.
I was, I didn't do anything with it.
Refresh my memory.
So, somebody was, somebody sent us all an email on that, you know, we're supposedly three towns, you know, one community, blah, 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 blah. Yet Arundel residents don't get an opportunity for a discounted beach.
I do recall that.
So, I'm just asking what's our answer to that?
What do you want me to do with it?
I don't know. We got an email, somebody, I just, you know, don't, didn't want to just ignore it.
I'm not sure if that subject's ever been approached, but I think it would be a hard sell for our coastal communities that we associate with to give us beach passes.
They have, they have a real hard time now within themselves.
I'm sure they do.
You know, arguing on how many they're going to give, and if all of a sudden, now they're going to give more to, but, you know, I just thought I'd ask the question. There you go.
There you go.
The other thing was hazardous waste thing.
Yes.
You gave us this tonight?
Yep.
We're probably just, is this on the website at all?
It went on the website today. It's going to, I just gave some for Roger, we're going to have them up to the transfer station starting tomorrow.
Okay.
So, folks will, and I, as Velma asked me prior to the meeting, I had one disgruntled resident who went to Kennybunk thinking they're going to get rid of their hazardous waste and got turned away. Obviously, what she described to me is that, said that the Arundel Town Manager told us that we couldn't go there anymore. So, that was the response I got. So, I explained to them that it was more of a contractual difference of opinions based on their contract, and that we found another alternative, and it will be on the 30th of October here in town. So, hopefully, that takes care of folks' concerns and that we have a good turnout of our Arundel residents for that day.
I thought I'd saved it, but I didn't. I don't have it.
I think I deleted it.
Yeah.